Let's call the meeting to order.
May I, Ambrosio Hernandez?
Present.
Commissioner Sarwajardo. Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Lisa Flores.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Okay. Your motion to excuse members, absent members?
Over to you, he's here.
Oh, is he? Okay. So let's want to pledge allegiance in location. Who's doing your invitation? Luises?
Sure.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for the inspiration you give us to dream and to set goals. We submit each and every goal to you. May our goals reflect your will and may they glorify you. Please equip us with the needs to reach our desires and fill us with your awesome purpose to carry out what we set out to do. Amen. Who's here for the proclamation for deaf awareness? Great. You guys want to come up? Say hi. Say hi to your neighbors and family. Introduce yourself in.
Hello, my name is Marla Martinez and I work with the Deaf and Hard Hearing Center. And I, it's like right here.
Oh, welcome.
So this month, it's, uh, this month of September, it's Deaf Awareness Month.
Okay. Great. Um, anything, anything in particular that they do for the community that we need to make them aware of?
What do you mean?
Well, there's deaf awareness, so I don't know if they have programs or education or...
So here, the Deaf and Hard Hearing Center, uh, what they do is they help the people who are deaf.
Okay.
Uh, hard, hard of hearing, since their babies all the way to adults or senior citizens. And here in the County Fidalgo, uh, we have a program for, uh, two, two centers here, two hundred... That was two thousand, sorry, two hundred thousand, uh, people who live here, uh, here in the County Fidalgo, who have a here, are deaf.
Two hundred thousand?
Wow. Yes.
Isn't the county like eight, eight hundred thousand people?
Two hundred thousand people, two hundred thousand people who have a hearing disability.
In hearing. I mean, wow. And where is your, your office located, your facility?
It's right here on, on Cage, before Bridge.
Oh, okay.
So what we want to do is we want to have a program for the senior citizens, who, and the youth program. We have also a free technical, technology program. And to help the, the caseworkers for the people who are deaf. And to make sure that the different places provide sign language interpreters and accessibility.
Well, thank you for everything you do for our community and that population.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Gavero will be reading. Wait, do you have a guest with you?
Um, I'm too short. Hello, my name is Lily and I work with Marla alongside. And we do have many programs, you know, we're trying to advocate a lot and educate the community when it comes to these specific topics, because I know, uh, it's not something that we usually kind of tend to talk about. And it's very important, you know, for the community and local authorities, uh, to know as well, uh, how they can improve accessibility, especially for people who are deaf and hard of hearing.
Sure.
Here in the city of McAllen, because it's something that you don't usually see often, so we kind of do advocate for that.
Okay, you, sir?
Oh, sorry.
I don't have necessarily anything to say, but other than I really appreciate what the, the community does for them. And vice versa, what they do for the community.
So you work with them?
Yes, sir.
Oh, what do you do for them?
Um, I'm volunteering there.
You're volunteering, sir? Oh, good.
Good for you.
Great.
Yes, and we do have a lot of interest that come to our office from UTRGB and also SDC that come and help out to learn, you know, uh, learn about the, the programs that we offer, uh, to people who are deaf and also have a hearing loss, uh, things that we offer that they don't understand. We kind of try to invite people, you know, to come to our offices, especially our open house, which will happen soon in September thir- twenty-third.
Oh, okay.
So you're invited to.
Yeah, I was gonna say make sure you're invited. It's actually, I didn't even know, so.
Yes, yes.
We're aware of it, so.
We're always, uh, here willing to help, you know, uh, because we do know that a lot of people don't realize that they have a hearing loss. And then they're like, well, what do I do or where do I go? Like, they don't know that, how to provide interpreter. And for example, you, you can see the interpreter there, he's the volunteer, he's volunteering to interpret. So really, in reality, he, he's, we're gonna pay him to, you know, to do the services. Uh, but he also has a decision to, to volunteer and help educate the community to provide interpreters for the deaf people when they go to an event or something like that, that they require, whether they're deaf or hard of hearing, you know, you can also see it on the screen, uh, or add the subtitles on the screen as well. That's something that can help, like right now. While we're kind of, want to do is refer to us restaurants, different type of business to add captions on their screens, you know, that will help with equal access, uh, while they're eating, they can just also enjoy, uh, what's going on the screen. And we're trying to slowly educate the community as well.
Well, great. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for the explanation also.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Doc.
Great. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, whereas the deaf population includes a wide range of individuals, from those who were born profoundly deaf and use American Sign Language as a primary means of communication, to those with a degree of hearing loss who use hearing aids or other forms of amplification and communication modes. And whereas many of these hardworking individuals build and maintain our infrastructure, provide healthcare and human services, educate and mentor our future generation of leaders, and serve as a piston in the engine of a world-class economy. And whereas each September, organizations across Texas work to raise awareness on behalf of our fellow Texans and neighbors who are deaf and hard of hearing, and to promote available resources for education and effective communication needs of these Texans. And whereas the purpose of Deaf Awareness Month is to increase public awareness, to promote equal access to information and services for deaf individuals, and to educate the public about the types of educational programs, support services, and resources available. Now therefore, I, uh, Ambrosio Hernandez, or Ramiro Caballero, in behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and, and behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-twenty-two as Deaf Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
We have a second proclamation, correct? Are the guests here from Vanguard? You, you guys want to come up? Introduce your, your people, students?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Ray Perez. I'm a history professor for Vanguard Academy. And so here we have our delegation of student council, as well as our Leos Club, as well as our administrators, uh, that are here to thank you for all the wonderful support you have been giving us throughout the years as we remember, uh, nine eleven. Uh, twenty-one years ago is, is what has happened, right? And we want to remember it, uh, because it is special, especially to thank our firefighters, to thank our police, to thank our ambulance personnel, uh, anyone who was in the health industry, supporting, uh, and, and given our particular, uh, people who suffered a lot, uh, the support that they need and that we need also as a nation to heal. And that we cannot forget that terrible tragic day in September. And so our students here are going to go out there and they're going to actually, uh, lay a field of flags. They're gonna plant three thousand flags so that they symbolize and remember every single person that we lost. It's not going to be like, oh, we forgot about them. No, no. The flag symbolizes who they are, uh, as an American and as they still remain in their hearts. So these are our students right here.
Christian? I mean.
Hi, um, I'm Tristan Aguirre and I am the president of the Little Leos Club.
Great. Can you, can you stand right there? As you guys come up, come up and say hi to your, your parents and... Introduce yourselves, people who know who you are.
So I'm Adrian Guzman, so I'm the president of the Student Council for our seniors this year. And, um, I just kind of want to thank on behalf of us and the school. I actually was a part of the FAR EDC internship program.
Oh, yes.
So I was a part of that. I did that this summer and I just want to kind of also thank Mr. Perez over there in the back. Over there in the back, he, he did teach me a lot of, uh, skills that I needed to acquire for this senior year, but, uh, that's pretty much it. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Great. Welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Daniela Mendoza and I serve as vice president for the senior classes here. And today, I know, um, if you see us with Maroon, we are supporting the Yuvalde that the students are returning today in school. So this is just a way to show our support today.
Wonderful, thank you.
My name is Raoul Cantú and I'm also part of the student council here.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Haley Molina and I am a council member for our senior class.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm, uh, Anna Faith Masonet and I am also a council member.
Well, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Carlos Mendoza and also a council member of the senior class.
Welcome, sir. Staff?
Hello, my name is Dina Cano. I am the campus principal at Rembrandt Secondary. Um, we do want to say thank you for the opportunity that you provide and continue to provide for students representing Vanguard. We have, um, Ms. Angela Gonzalez and Dr. Barbara Gonzalez also here to support our students and to support our school and just show our gratitude.
That's great. Now, physically, where's your campus? The one you just said?
Twelve hundred East Kelly, Rembrandt Secondary, yes.
Yeah. Ladies?
Just good afternoon and thank you so much. I would concur.
Again, thank you for everything that you do for our school district. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for everything you do for our children, actually, so we're around. Thank you. So whereas the city of Far and all its residents desire to express a sorrow for the two thousand nine hundred eighty-three people who died in Manhattan, at the Pentagon and in Pennsylvania Field on September eleventh, two thousand and one, in what remains the deadliest act of terrorism in U.S. history. And whereas the land of the free, while grief-stricken, became one nation united, resolved and determined. And whereas the terrorists not only attacked American institutions and culture history, they also attacked American principles and we, the people. And whereas the city of Far and Vanguard Academy honor individuals and families who were directly affected by the September eleventh, two thousand and one tragedy, tragedy, sorry. And whereas we, the American people, will keep the flame of freedom lit for those Americans that died in this terrible event. And whereas the city of Far, its neighboring cities, and Vanguard Academy also honor and recognize local heroes who contributed to improving the quality of life for everyone here at home. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Far and Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, twenty-twenty-two as remembering and honoring the twenty-first anniversary of September eleventh at Vanguard Academy. In witness wherever I hear and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Far to be affixed on this sixth day of September twenty-twenty-two. All right, ladies, you want to bring your students up here, staff? Public testimony? Public hearings? Okay. Any public hearing on development service cases? Okay. Public hearing? Um, solicitation of comments from the general public on the twenty-twenty-two tax year proposal property tax rate for the city of Far? Okay. Public hearings, solicitation of comments from the general public on budget fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three? Okay, Annalisa the manager report? Anything to report? Where's the city engineer? Is he here today? There you are. How are, how are projects coming along?
October eleventh, we're gonna finalize the, that fifteen. And we submitted hundred percent for that sixteen to Texas, so we're, we're in a good, a good role.
Okay. And now you know that our RGV MPO, what do we get? Two point eight, uh...
Yes.
Billion, right?
Yes.
So that's significant. I remember we used to be five hundred million.
Yeah.
In funding. Yeah. Not billion. Yeah, two point eight after we emerged. See, it, it worked. Make sure we get our piece of the pie, sir. Don't go to sleep.
Mayor, we just want to invite the community, we are having a, this is a September celebration in Jones Box Park. So we want to invite the community to come out. Um, it'll be at the park and it's gonna be from six P.M. to ten P.M. Diez es seis de septiembre.
Oh.
Celebration for the community to come out and enjoy. It's gonna be on Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
All right.
Well, not this Friday, next Friday.
The following.
Yes.
All right. No problem. Well, sometimes we do things early or late, so. All right, no problem. We'll be there. Should we front and center? Okay. Uh, six for consent agenda. All items listed on consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing board and will be enacted by one motion.
Just to approve. Second.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? And we're gonna go ahead and move to... Uh, we have a VIP, I'm told.
Yeah.
Omar Cito? Pretendee? Um, you want to introduce yourself, sir?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioner Omar Antonio Dalo County Drainage District, number one.
Good. Good to have you back, sir, in your hometown.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we enjoyed your time here at the city of Far and we're glad you're doing great things now for the county.
Definitely.
Uh, you want to underline to the public what this is about?
Yes, so this inner local, um, you know, a couple months ago, we, we came to the city to partner up on a very important project for the Las Milpas Road area. Uh, big, uh, drainage improvement project that we're partnering with the city of Far. Uh, you know, when we start that project, you know, the project started off as a, we're gonna be using, uh, reinforced concrete pipe. And since then, we've been having supply chain issues.
Yes.
Received maybe about twenty percent of the pipe in three months, so we haven't been able to move on that project. So what we want to do is switch to this, uh, uh, high-performance polyethylene pipe. We've, uh, the county's been using it successfully. It's different than the, you know, previous experience we've had here in the city far on Dahlia Street. It's a different material. It's not the same type of pipe. And we, uh, also gonna add an, an extra year of warranty just to assure the city that, you know, we stand by this product and we're here to, you know, any issues with it. And we'll be able to move much faster. Once we order this pipe, we'd be able to complete the project. And so this is just to amend that interlocal.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I trust what you're saying is accurate, but when it comes to the, um, you said the, uh, warranty, I guess, or...
Yes.
That, you're responsible for that?
Yes. The, the, the County will, will, uh, honor a two-year warranty. Anything happens within two years, any poor installation or anything with the pipe, you know, the county will take care of it.
Have been different timeframe? It was the concrete?
Uh, concrete, you know, we're offering a one-year warranty with concrete.
So it's longer?
Yeah, longer.
Okay. All right. Uh, anybody have any other comments to approve? So, um, I just need to read it off, pretendee. Consideration in action of any on the amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between the city of Far and Idaho County Drainage District, number one, HCDD, number one, for the East Las Milpas Road Stormwater Improvements Project. The items support, of course, I F Infrastructure Engineering. Now.
So moved. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Ma. Great seeing you. In accordance with section five-five-one point zero seven-one to five-five-one point zero eight-seven of the SEC code, a far board commissioners hereby give notice that it is convening into executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, a time not being foretold, twenty-two. It is six oh-three, we're back in open session, I apologize.
Seven A, consideration in action if any on ordinance, amending ordinance number zero twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-seven EMS fee schedule. That's the first reading. This item supports SG, sound governance and fiscal transparency.
Okay. The motion for approval?
To approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Seven B, consideration in action if any on ordinance adopting grants, management policies and procedures manual. This is also first reading. This item supports SG, sound governance and fiscal transparency.
Would you approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Seven C, consideration in action if any on resolution appointing or reappointing one member to the bridge board. This item supports SG, sound governance and fiscal transparency.
Okay, any motion to untable?
Motion to untable. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is untabled.
I make a motion.
It was tabled before, right?
Yeah, so we had tabled it.
So we untabled it. We are.
Yes.
Okay. So do we have a...
All in favor? Yes, on table, right?
We already...
Okay. I make a motion to put, um, Los Arobias as the mem- new member.
Okay. Do a second? Do a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Seven D, consideration in action if any on resolution appointing or reappointing four members to the FAR Economic Development Corporation to, uh, Board of Directors. This item supports SG, sound governance and fiscal transparency.
Uh, no action on that.
Motion to keep tabled?
Do we have a motion to keep it tabled? There's no action on that.
No action.
Yeah. Next.
Seven E, consideration in action if any on resolution adopting the updated city fiscal and accounting management policies. It also supports SG, sound governance and fiscal transparency.
Would you approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Seven F, consideration in action if any on resolution to accept petition for voluntary annexation, setting date, time and place for public hearing, authorizing and directing publication of the notice of such a public hearing, and directing the city manager to prepare service plan for approximately thirteen point twelve acres of land, more or less located south of west, of west Havelina Drive in the city of Far's extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ. Hidalgo County, Texas. This item supports EV, economic vitality.
Nice.
Approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Eight, administrative, eight A, consideration pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero seven-four Texas government code to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager.
Would you untable? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. It is all, uh, uh, it is, uh, untabled, I'm sorry.
Eight B, consideration and appropriate action if any regarding the appointment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the city manager.
Would you untable? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is untabled.
H C, consideration in action if any appointing...
No, no, we have to, eight B, they're gonna have, since we untabled it, we have...
Okay.
Okay. I make a motion to accept resignation of city manager and approve, unapproval agreement as discussed in executive session. Second.
Second? Uh, any, any discussion?
I have no discussion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
H C, consideration in action if any appointing interim city manager.
Would you untable? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Nine, purchasing, consideration since...
I'm sorry, we have to take action. We need to appoint someone.
Sorry, sorry.
That's okay, sir. So we're on eight. C.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, place, um, Annalise as our interim city manager.
Annalise, uh, last name?
Oh.
Correct. Okay.
Second.
You just had to say it for her, her full name.
Okay.
That's all, I'm sorry. We've got a first and a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations.
Nine, purchasing, A, consideration in action if any authorizing the city manager to purchase surveillance camera upgrades for police department towers from A Three Communications Incorporated DB, Doing Business As Three sixty, integrated from San Antonio, Texas through GSA Cooperative Contract GS dash zero seven F dash zero two zero zero W in, in, in an amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. This item supports SSC, Safe and Secure Community.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten A, consideration in action if any on agreement between the city of Far and Exxon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of one hundred and fifty-two Exxon Taser seven devices through buy board contract number six four eight dash two one in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents for year twenty-twenty-two and for each additional year until August twenty-twenty-six for a total of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents for the FAR Police Department Patrol Operations.
Nice.
This, uh, item also supports SSC, Safe and Secure Communities.
Would you approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten B, consideration in action if any on lease agreement with Stryker Sales LLC out of Redmond, uh, Washington for Lucas three-point-one chest compression systems for use by the fire department. This item supports SSC, Safe and Secure Community.
Would you approve? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Ten C, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to award a contract for the PSJA Tri-City Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project Phase one to A, ASAGO, Asago LLC out of Mission, Texas in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars and fifty-five cents. It also supports QL, Quality of Life.
Would you approve? Second.
So which, uh, engineering, right? So which, uh, schools is it gonna cover? Do you have a list of the schools?
I do have it here. Let me, let me find it.
Okay, make sure you come back and report to us, which, because I know there's certain schools that are gonna be, uh, selected and they were selected by PSJs for, they lacked sidewalks.
Yes.
Right?
Okay. That's correct.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten D, consideration in action.
We did that. Next one.
I want this done. I'm, I'm ready to go. Ten E, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to extend the supply contract and with Costco Industries out of La Porte, Texas for the purchase of structural firefighting helmets. This item supports SSC, Safe and Secure Community.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten F, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to extend service contract for the citywide electrical on-call and maintenance services rotation list. This item supports I F Infrastructure.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Ten G, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to extend the supply contract for the purchase and application of prime coat and tack coat with asphalt oil expressed out of Edinburgh, Texas. This item supports I F Infrastructure.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten H, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to award supply contract for the purchase and delivery of chlorine and calcium hypochlorite to DPC Industries Incorporated from Corpus Christi, Texas. This item supports I F Infrastructure.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten I, consideration in action if any authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with workforce solutions for the Texas Internship Initiative Program. This item supports EV, economic vitality.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This Julian Alvarez, right? This Julian Alvarez? Yeah, that's him, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Ten J, consideration in action if any on amendment number one to the fiber construction management contract. This item supports IF, infrastructure.
Okay, motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
And eleven is legal.
Still adjourned. Taken.
All in favor on that?
Aye.
Oh, uh, before we adjourn, uh, our city manager would like to share some thoughts and some commentary, uh, as always colorful, because he's.
Yeah, you know, uh, it's been, it's been really a privilege to be your city manager for the last, you know, whatever it is, few months. Uh, you know, it's, it's a hard job to do, to do both and to be a chief of police and a city manager is not fair to vote. And, uh, my heart is in the police department. I love the men and women of the PD. Uh, will always be there and it's, it's just, just a good time to, to, to go back to where my heart is for now. And, uh. I, I wish Anali the, the very best, you know, I'm here to help you, uh, because you're gonna need it, because I've been here, but, but it's a great, it's a great position, but really thank you for the opportunity to do that. Not many people get to do that, so at least I got to be here for a little while, but I'm back to the PD and, and, and let, let's continue lifting up the city. Yeah. I'm excited to go back. Thank you very, very much.
Absolutely. Chief, I just want to say on behalf of myself and the city commissioner, I want to thank you for the service you provided the city of Far and its great leadership. All the insight that you did to help us become a better city. Yes, it wasn't exactly twelve years that you're with us, but the little, the, the time you were, were of quality and substance. And very positive in, in that regard. We know your, where your passions are and you should follow your passion. As much as I try to beat you up to stay, I mean, I understand you're gonna do what you need to do for you and you should always follow your heart and we agree with that. And, uh, it is, uh, you had two major jobs on your shoulders. That's very stressful for any human being, let alone, you know, I mean, and then your family, right? You gotta take care of your family as well. We all have families. So we, we understand and we respect your decision. And from, um. On behalf of myself and the city commission and the commission can say, comment if they like, we want to thank you and wish you nothing but the best. We know you've excelled. As a police chief and we have many more accolades coming because of you and your vision and Chief Robles and everybody who is working with you. Uh, we know we're an, not an exceptional, but a absolutely premier police department.
That's right.
Under your leadership and your colleagues that you have and we expect nothing but the best and better for our city. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, mayor.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you, mayor and everyone else. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Taken.
Taken.